This conference will now be recorded.
Hello, today is August 26, Wednesday, August 26, 2020, and we are about to begin our Board of Commissioners work session. It is just now 5:00 p.m. Work sessions are an opportunity for board members to discuss issues informally with staff and invited guests. The Board encourages members of the public to attend work sessions and to listen to this discussion. But there is generally no opportunity for public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the Board are welcome to do so during the Board's regularly scheduled meetings. Okay, thank you. So let's, let's get started on, we have five minutes for Board communication. And who would like to start today? I'm going to pick on Commissioner Webb.
Hello, everybody. The only thing on my mind right now is that my granddaughter is going to show up in this world on Friday. And, and her name is going to be a secret until then. But then I will be broadcasting it probably all over the world. Maybe writing it in the sky or something like that. But that's about what I have on my mind right now.
Well, congratulations. That's wonderful.
Congratulations.
Okay. Well, Commissioner Nebiker, you spoke up, so you get to go next.
Oh, okay. Well, I think I brought it up before about this legislation that will be on the ballot, or this measure that will be on the ballot. I had talked about the, what could be the abundance of the marijuana taxes. $100 million, I believe, last year was taken in, or something close to that. And so this, this bill would be to, this measure, would be to fully fund addiction treatment. And it was asked, maybe it was at Human Services, I'm not sure. But anyway, it was asked if housing would be a component. And I have been talking with the folks who are, who have written this. And yes, housing will be a component. So that's, I think, very good news. And talked to my grandson today, who's in the NBA bubble. And as I was talking to him, he said, wait, the games aren't starting. Something's wrong. So he didn't know what was about to happen. So some of the players are boycotting because of what happened in Wisconsin. And so that's news from there. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Nebiker. Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, Chair Sullivan. Well, we've been doing strategic planning, which always thrills me. I, I think I'm a dyed-in-the-wool nerd. I get goosebumps when people talk about things like strategic planning and data sets and stuff like that. So I thought to myself, well, wouldn't it be useful if we had a comprehensive economic analysis of every kind of industry that produces revenue in Oregon? And so I've been talking to people about that. It's a longer term issue, of course, but some people are interested in it, which is, which is lovely. And rather than using weaponized truth dueling subsets of data, to have something that would support good public policy based on a comprehensive look at costs and benefits across all the dimensions of revenue. I don't know, it just makes me happy thinking about that. I mean, I love my grandchildren, but I get happy talking about strategic research. So that's where I am.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Thompson. That sounds like a promising direction. Commissioner Wheeler?
Well, first, congratulations to Commissioner Webb and to Commissioner Nebiker. I'm still pretty jealous about your son being able to be in the NBA bubble. That's been some exciting games, a lot of those, including the Blazers, although the last few haven't been that great. But I'm sure he's got, he'll have a lot of great stories coming out of it. I too enjoyed the strategic planning meeting yesterday. I thought that went really well. And lastly, just to, I guess, congratulations to the, to the kids that participated in the 4H livestock auction, the virtual 4H livestock auction at the fairgrounds. You know, it was a tremendous success under the circumstances. So I guess kudos to all those kids.
Oh, that's wonderful. Thank you. For myself, I was, I was happy that we, we had that strategic plan. And I know we've got to really, you know, roll up our sleeves and work hard on that for the rest of the year. And I hate to leave on a sad note, but I was listening to Democracy Now!, and the report on what happened in Wisconsin is very disturbing. I'm hoping that we are heading, heading towards the light.
Tell me what happened, please?
There was another man, a black man, who was shot seven times with a port blank range in front of his children.
Oh, man.
He survived, but he's paralyzed. So we, we have a ways to go yet. So anyways.
Chair Sullivan? Could I just add one thing that I didn't want to couple with my, with my good news? A wonderful Clatsop County citizen, Dave Krueger, died this morning.
Oh, really?
Yeah, he had a, he had a brain aneurysm. And he was, he went to CMH and they sent him to Portland. And, and he passed away this morning.
Oh, I'm sorry to hear that.
Dave was an absolutely wonderful citizen of this county and gave back so much more than just his service as a teacher. And, and I, I'm, I'm very, very sad about it.
Thank you for telling us. I, I knew Dave for many years. He, he taught with my husband. And I'm sorry to hear that. Thank you.
Sorry to hear that.
Oh, boy. Well, let's all take a breath and then we'll move to the formal agenda. Does anybody, does anyone have any, any questions about what's on the agenda? Or any changes that they'd like to make? Doesn't look like there is any? Okay. So let's move on now to the topics, the fiscal year 2019, 20, 1920, whatever it is. We're, this year, fourth, fourth quarter, we have about 10 minutes for that. And what staff member will be presenting that?
That was Ms. Fieldman. Yes.
Okay. Before you get started, Commissioner, I'm sorry, Assistant County Manager. Perhaps you, we have, we have a new budget person, correct?
We do.
Do you want to take a second and tell us a little bit about this new person?
Sure. She will begin working for the county on September 1st. Her name is Jennifer Carlson. She is a native from Astoria. She currently lives across the river in Chinook, though. But she grew up in Astoria and she went to Astoria High School and then went on to Oregon State University, where she received her accounting and finance degree. She worked for the Sunset Parks and Rec District for a number of years. And, and then most recently, she has been working for River Barrel Brewing Company, also known as Bowie Beer, for about the last year and a half. She has forever had aspirations to work in government and specifically for the county. And so she is very excited that she is going to be undertaking this new adventure. And we look forward to having her come. Does result in a little bit of shifting around of some staff because she actually has a parent who works for the county. And we do have rules that you cannot supervise any family members within the county. So one of the budget and finance staff people will still be working, doing budget and finance work, but will be working from the county manager's office and, and working under me still and providing support to the budget and finance department for things that don't require the budget and finance managers' supervision. So we are very excited to have her on board. And I know she's very excited to get here and get to work, so.
Well, that sounds wonderful. Thank you. Thank you for letting us know that. Okay, go ahead.
Sure. So this is the fourth quarter financials. So the fourth quarter ended June 30th, 2020. So this does mean that, sorry, my slide is not progressing up. So this does mean that these are unaudited, unaudited balances. We are currently going through the audit process. And there are still some revenues that are to be, to be received by August 31st. So, so some of these numbers will change by the time our financial statements come out. So overall, the, the funds expenditures fell in line with either the budgeted amounts or updates that occurred throughout the fiscal year because of grant funding or, or additional changes and such that were approved by the Board. And we did come in at 103% of the current year property taxes that were budgeted. So all was good there. In regards to the fourth quarter and all the fund revenues that were collected, they, they came in just slightly over budget. We budgeted 52.2 million and we came in at just over 54.1 million. And so we were 103%, 103.6% collected. The, sorry? Lighting on to the next page. Sorry. And so as for the general fund revenues, these revenues also came in above what was budgeted at approximately 108%. While there were some things that did not come in towards the end of the year, as would have specifically like the room taxes, we still came, we still received what was budgeted. And so this next slide specifically represents some of the major general fund revenues that we do receive. So as you can see, property taxes came in as budgeted and timber revenues came in. And the amount that remains within the general fund came in as budgeted. The amount that gets transferred to special projects came in as budgeted. And then we received approximately 826,000 above the budgeted timber revenues. And so those monies were received into the general fund stabilization account for the long-term financial plan. Some of the other significant revenues that we received, as I mentioned, while the fourth quarter was thrown off a little bit due to the current COVID situation and the fact that we were not allowing hotels and short-term rentals to operate because of the travel ban. We budgeted $945,000 in room tax revenues and we received just over 1.2 million. And, and that budgeted 945,000, that is budgeted throughout different areas. That includes the amount that goes to the general fund. That includes the amount that goes to the tourism promotion, the amount that goes to the public road and drainage improvements, and the amount that goes towards the jail operations. Some other revenues that came in above budgeted amounts include marijuana revenues. The state revenues came in slightly above budget. And, and then the federal revenues came in above, above budget. And that is because the, we did receive for the federal reimbursement of the CARES funding for the first reimbursement request that occurred during the 1920 fiscal year. And so that is what the majority of those revenues from the federal government are. This next slide is representative of just the timber revenue over the fiscal years historically. And so we still continue to come in higher than in previous years, but not as high as the last couple of years. So we have seen a slight decline there. This next slide is representative of the payroll expenses in the general fund. Overall, our payroll expenses came in at about 94% of the budgeted amount. The increase from 1819 to 1920 was approximately 1.7 million. And this included an increase of nine FTE from the previous fiscal year. And the, the 1.7 million not only is a result of the nine, additional nine FTE, but it was also associated with increased COLAs, applicable step increases, cost of PERS, and then increases in healthcare. This slide here is representative of the general fund org unit expenditures. And as you can see, they all came in either under budget or the adjusted budget amount. The adjusted budgeted amount was 26.7, 26,717,614. And the total general fund expenditures that were recognized to date as of June 30th were 22.9 million. And then of those revenues collected to date were 23 million. And that excludes the beginning balance of approximately 5.6 million. This slide here represents the org, org units within the Public Health Department. And so the one program that, there was a lot of activity that occurred in was the emergency preparedness program. And that is where a lot of that and the, the HHS Community Health one, that is where a lot of our COVID expenses were expensed to. And so those were adjusted budget adjustments that came before the Board, specifically in the Community Health Org Unit. This slide here represents the Roads Department. And again, the number, the amount came in below budget. The amount for the Road District is only the amount that was budgeted to be transferred. And so the, the equipment replacement amount came in significantly below budget. That was $675. There were a lot of things that prevented us from moving forward with equipment purchases. A lot of that had to do with COVID and the timing of the equipment. Some of the equipment that we have is made for us. And there were a lot of delays, delays that occurred with the COVID environment. In addition, going through this process, there were other pieces of equipment that we realized, no, we're going to have to hold off on purchasing these. And we will purchase them next fiscal year, just so that way we, we didn't end up trying to figure out if, whether or not we would get it in time. This slide represents all the other org units that haven't been addressed. Again, the majority of these came in well below the budgeted amount. Much of that has to do with budgeted contingencies and not spending those budgeted contingencies. The 4H and Extension Org Unit, that one does not reflect the fourth quarter payment. At the time that we prepared this, we were still waiting on the fourth quarter invoice. The state has a fiscal year that runs different than ours. And so I do believe since then, we have received that invoice and it will be paid. So again, just some reminders that these are unaudited numbers. And so when we receive our financial statements that typically get presented to you in late January, early February, some of these numbers are going to be slightly different. All funds came in under the budgeted amounts. And at this point in time, things are looking good in regards to having a timely completion for our audit. Some of that, again, depends on relying on other agencies that we need information from to be able to complete that audit process, which includes the Housing Authority. We have contacted them and let them know that our auditors were here and that they'll be returning in October to complete the fieldwork. And so we're optimistic that the lines of communication will remain open and that we'll be able to get this completed in a timely manner and submitted by December 31st, prior to December 31st. And so I don't know if you have any questions. And I apologize because I'm not being technically savvy today to figure out how to get my screen to no longer share.
Monica, I guess I, I would like to, it feels like this is not just simply the, the quarterly report. Because since March, with all this funding coming in for COVID, I can't imagine that yourself and the staff haven't been doing heroic measures of trying to get all the funding in the right streams and figure out how, what will count, what will not count. And I know that that's ongoing. And I was wondering if, and I, and I want to thank you for all the work that, that all of you and the staff are doing on behalf of the county. I was wondering maybe if you wanted to say anything about, about this time during COVID with the funding that we're looking for? Is there, you may or may not have any comments, but.
No, I do have comments. I don't know if, if Teresa can make the screen go away. But.
At the bottom of your screen, that should say, under the share, under screen.
Sorry, I don't.
That's okay. I don't mind looking at it.
Yeah. So, um, oops, I don't want to end the video for all. Um, so in regards to the, the COVID funding streams, it has been a lot of tracking for staff. The, the hard part right now is we are getting, it's a good thing, it's a good problem because we are getting funding from the state, from the state and pass through from the federal government. Right now, the difficulty is making sure that we are not double counting some of the expenditures that we're having because we do not want to be double dipping for any of these funds. And so originally, what was happening was we were just submitting all of our, all of our expenditures. And that was coming into one pot. And each department was tracking what costs they had that were associated to COVID. And so we were keeping track of that. And then once we got those grant funds, we then reimbursed those different programs. And now we are getting several different funding streams. And so like the Public Health Department has a funding stream. The Sheriff's Office has a funding stream. So we're trying to make sure that we are not duplicating some of the expenses that we're reporting. So we want to make sure that when we're tracking all of the people who are coding their time in the payroll system to COVID, that they're not already being reimbursed by a separate funding stream. So when I submit that information, I'm only submitting it for those who haven't already submitted it in some other fashion. So I feel like all of our departments are really tracking it well. We, we have systems in place in regards to, like I said, in the payroll system, coding it to a COVID time. So, and then we also are tracking the grants, the other departments that are receiving. Like for instance, in a future board meeting, you'll be approving a grant funding for the Sheriff's Office, who will be getting additional funding for COVID-related expenses. So all of those things get passed through Budget and Finance. So we're aware of them coming in. So then that way, when we are keeping track of all of this, it's all, it's all done separately. Right now, the, the county, I feel, is in a positive place because we have been getting those reimbursements coming in. And like I said, you know, the, the biggest revenue stream that, for the general fund that would have been impacted by this was the transient lodging tax. And as you can see, it came in above the budgeted amount. So a lot of that, or pretty much all of that, is because before the fourth quarter, we were already so, so well above the amount of revenue that was budgeted. So therefore, seeing little income during the fourth quarter didn't have that significant impact on us. There are concerns just kind of moving forward, especially with the, the state having to adjust their budget in regards to some of the revenue streams that we received from the state and how those might be affected. But so far, the, the county is still in a positive place and our reserves help in those situations as well. So. Does that answer your question?
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, I think that's great. I, I, I think it's important that we support you and support the staff in doing the work that you're doing. And I just, I'm, I'm happy to hear about it. So thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Does anyone, I see Commissioner Nebiker has her hand up. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Sullivan. So what would you normally have budgeted? I am assuming you budgeted lower for the room tax, anticipating maybe, you know, less because of the virus? So.
No, we, the, when we budgeted, when we built the 1920 budget, we budgeted those room tax numbers. Those were increases over the prior year, the amount that we budgeted. I mean, we're still, we're still cautiously optimistic when, when we're budgeting our revenue streams. And we budgeted thinking that we were going to be having, you know, 12 full months of regular transient lodging activities. So we didn't anticipate, we didn't make any changes to the budget. We just, there's just a significant amount of tourism that's coming to our county. And so since we already had hit the budgeted amount, when the fourth quarter hit, we were, we were already doing okay. We did make, when we budgeted for 2021, because at the time we were preparing the budget, we didn't know how long the travel ban and, and all of the COVID stuff was going to be happening. So we were a little bit, a little bit cautious when we were budgeting revenue for 2021. But based on the fact that our fourth quarter transient lodging receipts that we received came in higher this year than in the previous year. And part of that might be because some of these hotels and short-term rentals that we're collecting for are charging more for their rooms because there's a higher demand. But then it might also just be, I, this past month has been crazy busy for, for our community. And so there's just a lot of people who are coming here right now. And so while we were cautious when we budgeted for 2021, at this point in time, I, I would say that we're kind, we're probably going to be coming in above last year's average. Does that make sense? Does that answer your question?
And that's, that's even with the consideration that there was a travel ban for a while. So that's, that's interesting. Yeah, judging from the amount of people that have come to the area, I can, I can understand. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you. To take that a little further, there are, I want to call it tourists who come and reimburse our economy with transient occupancy and restaurants. There are tourists who come, who do not reimburse our economy. And I'm talking about people who come for the day. I'm talking about people who camp illegally. I'm talking about increased code enforcement. I'm talking about increased human waste because, because there aren't as many bathrooms. And the ones that are here are sometimes overwhelmed. People using the outdoors in ways that are not conducive to the maintenance of public health. So I wonder if there's an increased service demand that we also need to contemplate beyond just the revenues that we're receiving? Because as usual, these are very prudent figures, well-managed figures. What's the service need that exists? And it's, I mean, because, because we see a whole lot of people. I know the volunteer firefighters are having increased demands on their time because of traffic crashes. So just one. So just wanting to look again at the whole picture. I, I don't know who answers that question. It's not really a finance question per se, except that there is, I think, an increased demand for county services.
I would agree. It does definitely put, not just an increased demand on county services, but city services as well.
Yeah, I know that, that the pressure that's on our state and national parks has been tremendous. And my two thoughts on that is, one, there's such a demand for people to come out and be in natural areas. I'm glad that we have natural areas for them to go to. Because I imagine even though they're not, not everyone is behaving well, there's still a lot of relief in this time of just getting out and enjoying the natural settings. The other, the other thought is that because the state parks have had such a drastic cut in their budget due to the less funding through the lottery, it seems to me, and I don't, I don't know this, but I had talked to Monica a little bit about it, that, that, that may fall under some kind of COVID funding or should or whatever. But there's, there's just a lot of things that everybody's working out during this time of COVID.
Chair Sullivan, it's not the parks I'm talking about. What I'm talking about.
I understand that, but that's what I'm talking about.
Okay, I just, I want to talk about the increased load. Sorry, but there's a lot of illegal camping in our neighborhoods. That's especially down in this part of the world, in District 5. So I don't want to lose track of that because it's very concerning to neighbors. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes. All right. So let's move on to the, the next topic. Thank you very much, Monica. Let's move on now to the dissolution of the Skiponon Water Control District. And which county staff person will be handling this?
I will be, commissioners. So we've talked about.
Do you want to identify yourself?
I'm sorry. Thank you very much. Joanna Lyons-Antley, County Council. Chair and Commissioners. So the board has been made aware, a couple, I think it was a couple of weeks ago, we, we talked to you about the Skiponon Water Control District. Had adopted a resolution to initiate the dissolution of the district under state law. The, the resolution was filed with the, with the county. And it started, they started.
I'm sorry, Joanna, somebody needs to mute themselves.
So they initiated the process and they started the process. And the next step in the dissolution process, and I provided you previously with this information, was for the district board to call for an election. Subsequent to that, the district board, the Skiponon Water Control District Board, lost a board member. And so unfortunately, they didn't have enough board members to call for an election. So at that point, staff talked to you all about what to do for next steps. And wisely, your board advised that we should talk to the City of Warrenton. And so we did talk to the City of Warrenton on July 31st. And we talked to them about the implications of the dissolution of the district. The City of Warrenton had, I think, a whole variety of different thoughts about it. But what ultimately it came down to and what staff and those folks, those of you who attended that meeting, is what we understood is they're waiting for an Army Corps of Engineers report to be received by them. And I understand that that Army Corps report should help them decide whether they're really, you know, supportive of the dissolution or whether they would like for this Board of Commissioners to request or go find other board members to fill out that district board. So there really are a couple of different paths, but, but staff is really recommending that we wait for that Army Corps of Engineer report to come back. They expect it in the middle of September. I have not heard that it will be delayed, so I'm hoping that it, it would be in the middle of September. But also the, the staff folks, and I think the City of Warrenton will need some time to digest that. You know, kind of depending on what the outcome of that is, then this board can decide whether to call for an election. In fact, under state law, you can call for an election on behalf of the district board. Or you can dispense with an election, which is an option that we talked about the last time we considered the dissolution of the Water Control District. I think with that, I am happy to answer any questions.
Joanna. I'm sorry, I'll go to Commissioner Thompson first. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. This is such a juicy topic, isn't it? Well, it's, it's interesting to me. And I see Tessa, you're here. So I don't know if you're here to talk about this or not, but. So the City of Warrenton would like us to recruit more members. I'm curious why they think we're going to be successful now when we haven't been, nobody's been able to get anybody to be willing to serve for a long time. That's number one. And number two, please refresh me the cost of an election for this. Is this $500? Is that what I recall, something in that neighborhood?
I think that is correct. If we would have made the, sorry, there's. Thank you. If we would have made the August 14th deadline to be part of the election in November, it would have been about $500. But it's not terribly expensive. I talked with the county clerk and she believes it'll be about $1,000.
So still, the question remains, why does the City of Warrenton think we'll be successful now in recruiting additional members when nobody has been willing to step forward for years? I'm, I'm, I just don't understand that. You were in the meeting. I don't know if they addressed that or they just said they wanted us to do it anyway.
I don't know that they thought necessarily we would be successful. I, they didn't have any suggestions for names, for example. But they certainly want us, wanted the board to consider going down that path and calling to see if anybody was interested.
Joanna, so, I'm sorry, go ahead. Go ahead, Joanna.
I was just going to say, one, one thought that came up, as of course, you've seen, is, is Tessa Scheller is on, on the call. But when she dropped off all the documents for the board, because I had asked her to do so, so we could have possession of those documents, she mentioned that, in fact, the financial documents, what, we weren't, really weren't sure how we were going to access those bank accounts. And so it really might make some sense if in the future, we do ultimately, regardless of which direction we go, appoint, find somebody who'd be willing to serve, to get access to the financial documents, if that makes some sense. Because working with, with banks or credit unions can be difficult if you don't have a quorum. I'm certainly anticipating that that would be a lot of documents going back and forth between me and the financial institution that the money sits in for the Skiponon Water Control District.
Mr. Webb.
I guess I come down somewhere near Commissioner Thompson's opinion. When I first read this and talked with the county manager about it, I think it's a, pretty much a waste of time for either commissioners or our staff to try to recruit people. We have a lot else going on right now that we need to be spending our time doing. And this just makes no sense to me to try to reconstitute this board until there is a decision on the part of, of the City of Warrenton. About, I assume that what they're trying to do is to anticipate the cost of maintaining that, that floodgate. So, so I, as I say, to me, it's a waste of our public time to try to reconstitute this board. Because it also looks like, you know, depending on what the, what the Warrenton decision is, it could have lots of other implications for us other than just shutting down. So I, I would, I would not, I would not support the idea of trying to, to reconstitute this board. As I say, there are a lot of things going on in this county right now that deserve our attention and our resources. And, and this is just not one of them. Well, waiting until October 1st, what, that's a month away. What's the big deal? That's, that's my input.
Thank you, Commissioner Webb. I, I have, I have faith that the current board did all that they could to, to, to take care of the situation and they met an impasse that they just, they just decided they just couldn't go any further. You know, I, I don't know if the, the City of Warrenton is what they're willing to do to, if they do, do indeed want a, an election. Are they, I think there's a very limited number of people that can even be on the board. What, what, what have they done? Are they going to have a campaign going in order to, to get people to run? Is there a timeline on it? And in the meantime, who takes care of these assets? You know, it's kind of a sticky problem there. What do you think, Joanna?
To talk about the election, yes, I think they're talking about it with the, the City Warrenton staff and some of the elected officials. I think they were interested in calling for an election. But again, they were waiting to see, you know, what that report came back from the Army Corps of Engineers. And I, so I think that really is the, the, the time thing that, that's why staff is recommending, let's just wait. Let's just see what that, that response is going to be. As far as who's going to take care of the assets, I don't think, I, I think they have two, two sets of assets, right? They have the assets out. Correct me if I'm wrong, folks, but I think they have a couple of different assets that are actual physical assets. And certainly, I don't think anything's going to happen in the next couple of months to those. And then the other assets they have is the financial assets, which again, I don't see that, you know, nothing is going to be impacted by waiting a couple of months. So, and that's why staff has come down on recommending that we just wait.
And if I could just.
Okay, thank you, Joanna, County Manager.
Chair Sullivan, members of, of the board, as you know, this is, this is a dance that we're doing with other government agencies. And so our goal is to vet the issues and to have a plan, kind of eyes wide for really everybody so that these assets can be managed. So as Joanna indicated, you know, our recommendation at this point is to just wait, see what the core report is and then have a conversation. It could be at that point that the clearest path forward is to just dissolve by, by, by board action, you know, and so we will assess that once we get there. And I think there are situations that the city would support that too. So I think what's really going to drive this is what the core report says. And so I would, I would just suggest that we wait, we just wanted to follow up since we did have, have the conversation with Warrenton. So it's all pre-decisional at this point. So we'll wait until October or so and then we'll come back and have another conversation.
Thank you, County Manager. So does anyone have any, any other comments before we finish with this discussion? Okay, I want to, I want to thank the folks that have been on the line, particularly for that matter. I know it's, it's been quite consuming for everyone. And I appreciate you being here and giving the information that you have so far. So we will await the next report. And we have about 15 minutes before our regular scheduled meeting. And I see Ms. Liz Dennis has joined us. And Liz, do you, do you need anything to talk to Teresa for your presentation? Are you all set?
I'm all set. We don't have a PowerPoint presentation, so I'm really just here to have a conversation with you all.
Okay, thank you very much. So we, you can, y'all can shut off your phone and, I mean, the power, the camera and the mic and we'll see you back here in about 15 minutes, six o'clock. Thank you. Hello, today is Wednesday, August 26, 2020, and we're here for a regular session of the Board of Commissioners, County Board of Commissioners. The Board of Commissioners is the governing body of Clatso County, all county service districts for which this body so acts. And as the Clatso County Local Contract Review Board is now meeting in regular session. May we, Clerk of the Board, may we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Thompson?
Here.
Commissioner Webb?
Here.
Commissioner Quila?
I just saw him.
I, yeah, I did too. Commissioner Nebiker?
Here.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Here.
Commissioner Quila? It looks like he's trying to unmute.
I stopped my video because I'm having, it's slowing down, but I'm here.
Okay, thank you.
I'm having that trouble too, Commissioner Quila. Okay, so thank you. We have, everyone that's here tonight. And is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Second, Commissioner Thompson.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Anyone oppose? Okay, the, the.
Yes.
Commissioner Webb, your hand up?
Excuse me. I was hoping we would not move so quick, so quickly through, through the approval of the agenda. I'm sorry, I had trouble unmuting myself. I would like to propose, is this appropriate now, too late? Chair Sullivan?
Well, we have the motion and seconded, so I guess we can discuss it now. We did kind of vote on it, but what, what's your concern, Commissioner Webb?
Well, I would, I would like to bring off of the consent agenda, item number eight, which is the Human Services Advisory Council Bylaw Revision. And in order, in order for us to discuss this.
Okay.
It's, it's a rather unusual request from an advisory committee. And I, you know, we've been talking recently about trying to make, make our, our advisory groups a bit more robust, et cetera. And so I just, I didn't feel that there was enough staff explanation about why these things are being put forward. And I had, also had some questions about the overall responsibilities of the group as well. So I just think it deserves some discussion.
Chair Sullivan.
County Manager.
What I, what I might suggest is that we, we remove it from the agenda and we have a work session. And we bring it back in a work session first, so we can have that conversation and make sure that the board is comfortable. And then, and then we can re-agenda it at a future date.
That would be great. That'd be great.
I would be comfortable with that. How do the other commissioners feel about that?
The secondary of the motion accepts. I'm happy to withdraw.
I'm fine with it.
Okay, just a moment. Commissioner Thompson, please take us through that procedure.
I'm happy to support the withdrawal of the motion to approve the agenda and a new motion. If the maker of the motion is content with that, then we can make a motion to approve the amended agenda. a new motion. If the maker of the motion is content with that, then we can make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Okay, so who made the original motion?
Commissioner Nebiker.
Yes, I did. And I will withdraw.
Are you okay with us?
Yes, I will withdraw.
Who would like to make the new motion for the amended agenda?
Commissioner Thompson would move to accept the amended agenda with the removal of item eight under the consent agenda.
Do we have a second?
I'm second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda with removal of number eight from the consent calendar. All those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
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 Any, any oppose? Okay, I also approve it. So the agenda has, with the change of number eight being taken off, has been approved. And, and let's go on now to the presentation tonight. It's, we have a, a presentation from the Oregon Department of Forestry, and we have three speakers on, and we're very honored to have you here. And if you could identify yourself and what your job is, and then we'll go into the presentation.
All right. Can you hear me, Commissioner Sullivan?
Yes.
All right. Well, good evening. For the record, my name is Andy White, the Northwest Oregon Area Director with the Department of Forestry. And, you know, also with us tonight here, we've got Liz Dent, who is State Forest Division Chief, who will be providing an overview of the HCP process. Also with us is Brett Brownscomb with the National Policy Consensus Center there at Portland State University. And Brett will also be sharing, Brett will also be sharing some information here in a few minutes. First of all, I'd like to provide a little bit of a district overview on Dan Goody's behalf. Dan unfortunately isn't able to be here with us tonight. Dan sends his apologies. He's got higher priorities, given that he's dealing with an ailing, ailing family member tonight. So he'd much rather be here, I can tell you that. And, and as many of you know, Dan is the local district forester here in the Astoria District. And he provides oversight over the primary programs there with the Astoria District. And I'll, I'll provide a brief overview, and then we'll get into the HCP conversation. So I want to make sure we spend, we allow plenty of time to cover that this evening. When you think about the Astoria District, it's primarily three programs there, and it has a staffing of about 30 permanent personnel and probably another 12 firefighters that come on during the summer. And, you know, speaking, speaking of their protection program, Astoria is part of the Northwest Oregon Protection Association. And along with the Tillamook and Forest Grove Districts, those three districts protect about, I think it's about 1.7, you know, million acres of forest land. And that includes properties that are non-industrial as well as industrial. It includes county land, it includes some BLM land as well as state land. Some of that being the Clatso State Forest, as well as property managed by state parks and fish and wildlife. And I, I mean, and on that note, we're also at the peak of our fire season right now statewide, and many of the Astoria staff are deployed on fires across the state. And then actually, one of the reasons I'm filling in for Dan is a lot of times Ty Williams would have just stepped in and, and behind Dan, but he is deployed, as is John Tilletson and Neil Bond, and several other people who might have filled in behind Dan tonight. So things are busy across the state right now, and, and the Astoria District is doing their share to support that statewide effort. The district also administers the Oregon Forest Practices Act to help landlords meet their objectives out there on the forest land. And, and also helping landlords and operators comply with the requirements of the Forest Practices Act, and, and all of that's to ensure adequate resource protection, whether, whether that be water quality or wildlife habitat, ensuring successful reforestation, and many others. And, and I'd say lastly, then, the district also manages nearly 137,000 acres of state-owned forest land. And acres are actively managed to produce, you know, a balance of social, economic, and environmental benefits. And, you know, those lands, of course, will be part of our conversation tonight around it being some of that footprint that's involved in the West Oregon habitat conservation planning effort. And, and as many of you know, there's a lot of benefits that come off of those acres, whether that be, you know, timber sales that produce revenues and jobs, and provide funding to schools, or providing recreation opportunities, and as well as essential habitat and clean water. So that may not have been the exact overview that Dan would have provided had he been here, but, you know, batting cleanup, that was, that's kind of Andy's version of the Astoria District overview. So maybe I'll pause there and see if there's any questions before I turn this over to Brett. Okay, Leanne?
So thank you, Andy. So it's interesting to me, because when I first came onto the County Board of Commissioners, it was economic interest first and then social. And as I read your material, and I listened to you tonight, you said social first and then economic. So I don't want to get into a long discussion. I'll just tell you that I noticed the switching around of those, the order of the words. And so I think we'll have a more robust discussion about the significance or, or the difference or the variety of opinion in what that means. I just wanted to notice that now.
Okay, and, and if I did it five times in a row, I'd probably get the sequence different every time. Okay, if there are no other questions, Liz, did you have a comment before I turn this over?
Yeah, I'll just quickly speak to that, because Andy's exactly right. Depending on with, um, time, we talk about it, it can get twisted around or, or reordered, but we've gone to this order because this is the way it's described under our Oregon Administrative Rule and our statute. It's in that particular order. And we did that because of this exact conversation, Commissioner. So, like, which one comes first? We'll go to the rule and how the rule is ordered.
All right, thanks, Liz. All right, with that, I'll turn it over to Brett.
Okay, thanks, Andy, and, and all the commissioners from Clatso County, I don't know, maybe I'll just ask, Commissioner Sullivan, can you, am I coming through? Can you hear me okay? Okay, I'm getting head nuts. All right, great. So my name is Brett Brownscomb. I work at National Policy Consensus Center at Portland State University. And we've been engaged in this habitat conservation. Sorry, we've been engaged in this project to getting internet instability issues, so I just want to be sure we're okay. We've been engaged in the project as an independent process neutral. And so our role in this, and we've engaged the firm of Kearns and West from the private sector on the process side. And it's both the process of the negotiation that happens between the Department of Forestry and the federal services and other state agencies around to have that conservation plan. But for my role in particular, it's, it's with stakeholders and counties, and the process as it relates to all of those who care about state forest lands for any variety of reasons, and who the department wanted to be sure was integrated into the process, knowing that the Department of Forestry, as the actor applying for an incidental take permit and a habitat conservation plan, is pretty close to this. And as a process neutral, my job has been mainly in trying to have open, honest dialogues with stakeholders from the different sectors that you might imagine, forest products, timber sector, conservation, recreation interests. And then also with the counties, knowing that the role of the counties and the connection of counties to state forest management on ODF lands is central. And we typically get involved as a center in projects when there's a public decision on the horizon, and the public decision maker knows they're into a pretty thorny issue, and where they feel like independent process support could help, both in terms of increasing public dialogue and democracy, but also in taking blinders off and making sure everything is kind of coming in to, to their purview in a process, and that stakeholders are being heard. And knowing that this state forest management issue is sticky, wicked, and no shortage of controversy, we were engaged in this, and from past experience in this issue, I wanted to just recognize, give you a little bit of detail about how we at Oregon Consensus and National Policy Consensus Center are involved, and also kind of recognize that Clatso County is a really significant county in the conversation around both the habitat side and the harvest side of, as well as the recreation side and other facets of any habitat conservation plan, and the incidental take permit that relates to certainty around conservation and harvest. So that's, that's my role in a nutshell. And I think the bulk of the presentation with the detail that you all probably might be more interested in is with Liz, and so I don't want to hold that up.
All right.
But I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, great. That was a really great way to set the stage. So thank you, Andy and Brett, for doing that and, and being here tonight. And certainly really appreciate, want to express my gratitude to the commissioners for making some time on your busy schedules and full agendas for us to come here and visit with you about this really important project. So thank you very much. For the record, my name is Liz Dent, and I serve as a State Forest Division Chief within the Oregon Department of Forestry. We have three operating divisions, and you talked about that, protection from fire, state forests, and private forests. So, so I'm running the state forest program. I think you all received some materials ahead of time, and I really want to make sure there's plenty of time for conversation here and questions. I think Andy and Brett did a nice job of covering sort of the, the first bulk of the set of bullets there in that handout. There's one piece I would want to call out and add for you. My dog is playing with a squeaky toy, so I apologize for that. Distracting. So the, wanted to really call out that we're doing this work at the direction of the Board of Forestry. The work really started in 2011, where the board asked the division to work on revising the forest management plan that we currently have to increase conservation outcomes and to increase financial outcomes. So we started our work on that. And then a couple of years ago, the Board of Forestry asked and directed the division to also start working on a habitat conservation plan. We'd already been considering it, and they really came back to us and said, we think you need to do this with greater focus. We maintained our path on the draft revision to a draft forest management plan, and at the same time started working on an HCP. So it's been a little confusing. We've been doing those at the same time, but they really, and I'll get into this in a second, present very different approaches for managing these forests. So when it's all said and done, should the board want us to continue working on an HCP? And if we are successful, so those are two big decisions, any HCP in the future needs a companion forest management plan. And so that work that we've done on a draft forest management plan will still be valuable. But I don't, not really here tonight to talk about that draft forest management plan. I want to work it, focus on our habitat conservation plan. So first of all, what is a habitat conservation plan? A habitat conservation plan is an agreement between the Department of Forestry and the federal agencies that establishes a holistic approach to complying with the Federal Endangered Species Act. Those federal agencies in this case that we're working with are U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, because they have jurisdiction over the listing of the terrestrial species as threatened and endangered. Everyone's kind of familiar with northern spotted owl and marble murelet as an example. And then we're also working with NOAA Fisheries. They have jurisdiction over the listings of fish that have an anadromous element that also go to the ocean. And so steelhead, coho, salmon are the classic examples of that. All of these species that we're seeking coverage for, that I just discussed, are currently listed. There are some additional species that we are going to ask for coverage for that aren't yet listed as threatened and endangered, but it's a pretty sure bet that in the near future, they will be listed. So those are the two agencies that we're working with, the federal agencies. We also have pulled in our state sister agencies, so ODFW, DSL, ODFW, DSL, Department of State Lands, and we've also have OSU working with us a little bit as well. So we've really built a collaborative process with both state and federal agencies. Brett talked about our work with the counties and the stakeholders as well. So we're, we're really trying to manage this at multiple levels. So an HCP establishes, establishes two key things, long-term commitments to conservation, and also provides long-term assurances to manage these forests that would continue those commitments, those would continue throughout the life of the HCP, or propose in a 70-year habitat conservation plan. This, this, this approach, using a habitat conservation plan translates to, I think, the key message I would want to share with you all tonight is certainty. The way we currently manage to comply with Endangered Species Act is a, creates a high degree of uncertainty. So that's the big benefit of working with a habitat conservation plan. And so that certainty relates to, in, in the case both for conservation as well as harvest volume and revenue to forest trust land counties. And so there's a translation there of us having a known harvest level, if you will, and the benefits from a harvest perspective for the counties, and at the same time, here are the benefits for conservation. And really, those benefits, and while the services are interested in an agreement with us, is where we'll have to demonstrate that in exchange for those assurances to manage, there is going to be this uplift, if you will, or this increase in conservation for the listed species over the life of that habitat conservation plan. So that's what an HCP is. So then the next question is, well, why pursue a habitat conservation plan? We currently manage these forests without a habitat conservation plan. We manage these forests with instead what's called take avoidance. So an HCP says, okay, for 70 years, here are your commitments, go forth and manage your forests, monitor to make sure you're achieving our objectives. With take avoidance, every operation that we plan that may be near, have a certain proximity, or may have potential habitat for these listed species, we have to survey for the species, and that's costly. We spend about $2 million a year right now to do that. If we discover one of these endangered species, then we write a biological opinion, submit it to the services, and characterize if we think there's low, moderate, or high risk to the species, to taking the species. If we are able to demonstrate low risk, then we have been able to move forward successfully with our harvest plans. If we first look at it biologically and see a high risk, sometimes we can rearrange the harvest unit and move out with a low risk. Sometimes there's no, there's no sort of redrawing of boundaries that would work, and that harvest unit is off the table. And so what happens over time is, A, we don't know when or where that's gonna happen with any great certainty. And when it does happen, all the work that's gone into planning that timber sale is out the door, and we're having to look at other areas. So that's a problem. So that's a problem, a significant amount of uncertainty. It's expensive and inefficient in that way. $2 million a year, potentially having to drop harvest units, having to replan for harvest units to sort of still meet our desired harvest levels. Without an HCP, management is also subject to future listings. And so I mentioned, we have a couple of species within the HCP that are not listed yet. Red treble is an example of that. And should that be listed, there will be, A, we're going to have to survey for those whenever we manage in potential habitat or presence of red trebles. And there would be, as characterized and, and sort of expected by the services, there'd be a set of additional conservation measures in addition to what we do right now to protect those species. I just use red treble as an example. There are certainly others. So that crease, what that does is, is what you can tell in my, why we think an HCP is a good idea is over time, there's sort of this shrinking of the available land base for management and it's out of our control. It's up to what species is getting listed and what the services expect for conservation. Without an HCP, we're subject to third-party lawsuits that are allowed under the Endangered Species Act. When this occurs, and we've had experience with this, management and conservation decisions are established through litigation and court rulings. And that can have significant impacts and has had significant impacts in the past. It, with an HCP, the liability goes to the services. So we are not subject to that litigation. Instead, those parties would sue the federal agencies. So they are very committed to coming up with HCPs and conservation strategies that they think would prevail in, in that type of lawsuit. And they have a lot of experience with that. So with an HCP then, and as opposed to take, with an HCP, the department receives what's called an incidental take permit. It acknowledges that there's some habitat that we're going to be able to harvest that otherwise might support these species. But in exchange, we're providing this conservation in, in other ways that ultimately will increase conservation more than if we were to do this take avoidance approach. That's called incidental take permit. And it, and it is issued when the services determine that the conservation and management will contribute to the persistence of the covered species. So really my goal here tonight was to sort of lay that out. Why we're doing this at the direction of the Board of Forestry, what an HCP is, how it differs from take avoidance and why the benefit, why it's beneficial in this largely, I would argue about the certainty element. And that plays out both for conservation and financial outcomes that translate to benefits for the counties and the public. Maybe I'll just point out a couple of other items and then, then we can pause and just turn it over to questions. I want to be clear about next steps. So we went to the board in July and provided an update, provided an update on what was happening with the HCP. We had extremely draft preliminary outputs around what harvest volume might be like, how many acres we're going to be in conservation, et cetera. We were very clear that those numbers were preliminary and indeed we've been doing a lot of modeling. We just finished some modeling a couple of days ago as we continue to improve the model and refine our commitments as we've been working with the services. And so fully expect the numbers that come out next are going to be different than the ones that we released in July. So we'll go to the board in October with the draft chapters of a habitat conservation plan, highly draft, I want to say. We're also going with, to them with what we're calling a comparative analysis. So recall, the board asked us to work on a draft forest management plan, assuming take avoidance. So what the board wants to know is if you move forward with the current forest management plan, no changes. Or if you move forward with this draft plan, which represents changes to the current plan, but we'd still use take avoidance. Or if you move, move forward with an HCP, which one produces the, the outcomes and benefits that the board is looking for? So this comparative analysis will look, will compare those three approaches. It will provide information that's strictly meant to be in relative terms. So it's not a promise of any kind around this is the exact harvest volume, the exact amount of acres for conservation, et cetera. But it does provide a comparison between those approaches, allows the board then to make the decision, do you, board, want us to keep working on a habitat conservation plan and then move into a federal process called NEPA? Or based on that comparative analysis, would you want us to discontinue our work on the habitat conservation plan? And instead move back to looking at a forest management plan without an HCP? So that's the decision in front of the board in October. Do they, basically, do they want us to keep working on the HCP? We anticipate if they say yes, that there's still some work to do. There's more opportunity to engage the counties and stakeholders. And if they say no, we would have to come back to them in the new year and talk to them about how they want us to proceed with any kind of policy provision. One last note on next steps. Should the board tell us, keep working on the HCP? It has to, we do these final steps and then move into this federal NEPA process that takes about a year and a half. So we would not be, the board would not be making any kind of final decision until summer of 2022. So I just want to be clear, October is not a point where the board approves an HCP. It's a point where the board says they, they have looked at the potential outcomes and they want us to continue working on HCP or not. And we did attach a few maps. So I'll just point out here and then I will stop talking that the, we do have ownership throughout the state. That first map in your attachment shows our ownership from the northwest corner of the state here in Clatsop County down to the California border. And you can see we have some ownership there in Sunpass and Gilchrist State Forest on the east side of the Cascades. The HCP that we're proposing would cover our ownership west of the Cascades. So just wanting to point out to you that we're not including those eastern Oregon forests in this proposed HCP. And I'm sure it's not lost on any of you that covering and describing management objectives and conservation for our land bases from, you know, the north coast to the southern boundary with California that covers a huge variety of forest land types and ecosystems. And so it's a tall task, but I, I think we're achieving it. So I think we hit our target, 632. Hopefully we've left some time for you all.
Okay, thank you, Liz. I just wanted, before I, I have the other commissioner speak. I just wanted to reiterate that ODF has managed these, these forest lands for the entire state of Oregon over these past 80 years. And that this, that this that this HCP, like you said, is still in process. So let's, let's, let's go now to Commissioner Abicar, if you have a hand up.
Thank you. And thank you for this presentation. It's a good overview and it's very helpful to hear some timelines and where we might be going. Can you tell me about the current lawsuits on the coho salmon? And then I have two follow-up questions after that.
Yeah, absolutely. So we have, we are being sued by the Center for Biological Diversity and they've got, there's other organization, conservation organizations that have joined them on the litigation as plaintiffs. And their claim is that we are taking coho with our current forest management plan. And they name a number of different ways they think that that's happening, wood recruitment, roads, landsides, et cetera. We managed to get, to stay the case. Basically, we asked the judge, instead of starting the trial this past late spring, we asked if we could put that off until October. And the judge granted that stay. And two reasons, one was concern over the coronavirus and just not having the resources. No one really having the resources to, to hone in on some of this stuff. But also recognize that, you know, that was going to be something we figured out and indeed we have. But the other reason being that an HCP is a potential remedy to that lawsuit. And so we explained that the board would be making a decision in October. This decision I've just described. And so we'll go back to the judge in October and sorry, I'm hearing it echo. Is there something I need to do differently? There it goes. I think it went away. And, and, and explain whatever the decision that the board makes and, and the lawsuit starts up again. They have named, sorry, one more thing, Commissioner, I'll just add, I apologize. They've, they have identified nearly all of our sales that had been planned in the Tillamook Clatsop State Forest as causing take of coho. And history tells us that in situations like this, sometimes plaintiffs ask for a preliminary injunction. And were they to do that and were the judge to grant it, we would not be able to harvest those units until we get through the court system. The plaintiffs haven't asked for that yet, but that's certainly a concern.
Well, that was my second question, that could this affect timber sales? And my last one is, if we had an HCP already in place, then would that protect the county, the state from these kind of lawsuits?
It would. The, in, in the, to the degree that anything related to threatened endangered species would be directed at the federal agencies instead of the Department of Forestry. That's definitely one of the benefits of an HCP.
Okay, that's a little confusing to me. So say HCP was in place, could you?
Sure. If we have any, sorry. Apologize, Commissioner. If we have an HCP, this type of lawsuit from Center for Biological Diversity, they would not be able to file that against us. They would have to file their lawsuit against NOAA Fisheries. And they would be saying to NOAA Fisheries, you've approved an HCP that's causing take. And NOAA Fisheries has to defend the HCP. We do not have to. NOAA Fisheries has to. Because NOAA Fisheries is the one that agrees that what we're doing is going to conserve the species. So it's sort of a, it's an insurance policy. It's a protective umbrella against these types of lawsuits. Does that clarify it?
Yeah, thanks.
Okay.
Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, Chair Sullivan. Well, Liz, it's always interesting to listen to you. And as always, you make a lot of sense to me. I mean, well, what business doesn't want to have certainty? It's, and we, from my point of view, have to be in the business of business. Because if we don't look at how to pay the bills for county services, we can't do our jobs that we were elected to do. At least that's how I look at it. So I like the idea of a habitat conservation plan on a theoretical basis. In Clatsop County, because our Judge Guy Boynton was the architect of this Council of Forest Trustlands agreement, we don't have any forests of our own because we put them all in the common pot. Because we trusted you with your, you, the Department of Forestry, with your expertise to take care of our forests. So I know that some people, because I listened to a lot of people talk about a lot of different things. Some people don't understand that every forest takes management. That whether it's a parkland or a productive managed timberland, somebody's got to pay money to manage forests or they become tinderlands the way the federal forests have been. And I live right at the wildland urban interface. I pay extra money on my property taxes so that the Department of Forestry can protect me and my house from burning up because things burn here. We've had Tillamook burns. We know that wildfires are danger all over Oregon. So from someplace has to come the money to manage the forests. Park, plantation, whatever, and anything in between, there has to be money involved. So I look for, where's the data about the money? And when I looked at your plan, if I read it correctly, there's a 60-year dip in revenue. Did I read that accurately? Is that subject to change? Help me understand, help me understand about the money.
Okay. Couple of things, I, I think you're referencing some work done by Mason Bruce and Gerard?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I have not had time to evaluate his work. He always does good work. We provided him data and he did all those analyses. So I don't in any way want to kind of weigh in on that. I will say two things. One is those, I do want to be clear, the, the data that we provided to Mark was preliminary. And since then, we've done several different model runs and I expect quite, I'm quite certain we're going to have different results. So the magnitude, the patterns are going to be different. Okay. The second piece is that dip, and here's one way they're going to be different, that he was representing is a function of a business decision that foresters call departure. So what, I'm trying to make sure I can put this in the right terms here. So think of it this way, you know, we, we see the potential and can calculate what we think an average harvest level is going to be over time. And the way we manage right now is that we, we've calculated that's what we call sustainable harvest level. And we do everything we can to stay right around that average every year. And if we depart from that average, we do everything we can in the next year or two to bring it back down. So that is the departure, right? You're departing from the average. That, the first round of data that we provided, provided for a 20% departure above or below the average. And so that created, and, and we forced the model to allow that initial departure to play out over the first few decades. So it really increased harvest in the early years of the permit period. And then it just has to, there are only so many trees out there, it has to come back down. It's really, that departure is really what we've been promoting as we've been talking to those that are interested in the business side. That is a business decision. If, you know, the trade-off there is, all right, you, if you want more volume early on, that's a business decision. Is that something the county's like? Is that what you're interested in? Or would you rather see a much more even amount, but it's just going to be lower, but also won't have those very low lows? The change, and so that's a, you know, that's a really important business decision, we think. Certainly the counties and we're interested in what the purchasers think too, because it really is going to affect their business decisions. One of the changes in the model is instead of a 20% departure, we've taken it to a 10% departure. So the, the harvest levels can't go as high and they can't go as low. So that's going to decrease that dip and it's going to decrease the high. But there's still, there's still a policy and business decision of if, if we even want to do a departure. But that decision not only affects money to the counties, it also affects the forest conditions out there.
It's so complex and I really appreciate this because the income has to be, in, in my mind, as a county commissioner, we need adequate and stable income in order to provide county services. Families, families need adequate and stable income in order to provide for themselves. Companies need adequate and stable income. And we all need to have a habitable planet. So nice to be in the game with you. Thank you, Liz.
Yes, of course. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from the Commissioner? Commissioner Webb? Go ahead, Commissioner Webb.
What, Liz, what is it that you all want to hear from us as counties?
Thank you. Thank you for that question. My first objective today was really just to make sure you had information. You know, I wanted you to know what we're doing and why we were doing it, and why we think it's a good idea. I also want to be careful that, you know, that you're, that we give you the information for you to be able to weigh in. And so that's your question. What is it that we want to hear from you? And so this conversation that I just had with Commissioner Thompson is a perfect example. So does that idea of having just an average volume over time sound more attractive for you as a county, for the decisions you make to manage your services? Or would you rather see an opportunity to go, you know, to bounce around that average over time? And there's some, there's some reasons to do that. So that's one example. Another example is to think about, you know, how we provide a range of forest products that is beneficial for our purchasers. So one way we think about that is proximity to mills, because that's going to influence the cost for our purchasers to bid on our timber sales. So we'd like to hear from, you know, from both you and from the purchasers on those ideas. Would like to hear if you think an HCP is in the best interest of your county? And if so, or if not, why? So those, those would all be really good things to hear. We're working on decisions around what management would look like within habitat conservation areas and outside of habitat conservation areas. So there's some, some benefit from hearing you, from you all on that.
Would, can I follow up with that? You're, I don't know if you're aware or not, Liz, but, but we're in, actually, the beginning of revising our comp plan. And there are a lot of issues within the comp plan. You're, I'm sure you're very familiar with the forestry goal. And there are a lot of issues here that we are now directly addressing. And it seems to me, it's the same thing, I'm assuming, that would be in a habitat conservation plan. You know, it's riparian setbacks. It's, you know, it's, it's just, you, I know that you know all those issues. And, and what we are faced with, unfortunately, right now in our comp plan, is that we have two very divergent opinions on how we should be managing, managing our forest lands. And I think that from, you know, this board is in a unique position, because we have to weigh both sides. We have to do just what you're doing. And so, so I guess I'm, these are such complex issues. And I don't think on our commission, there are any foresters. But, and we all have different feelings about, obviously, we opted out of the Lynn County lawsuit. So, so, so there were, there were diversion, and remain divergent views on this issue. But in order for us to be as constructive as possible, and that's why, that's why I asked, you know, what do you need from us? Because, because we, we have an opportunity to be constructive, to be balanced. You, I mean, I have been very pleased, actually, with the way the staff, the forestry staff has been handling this whole HCP process. I mean, I'm sure you're getting a lot of the same comments we get. And so for me, I just, and of course, the other issue for us in this situation is, we don't have a county forestry staff, you know? In, in most of the, of the issues that we are interested in, responsible for, and care about, we have expert staff. We don't have any forestry staff. And so we are at the mercy of the conflicting voices that, that we're hearing. And, and for me, are you thinking that you would like to hear something from us by the October Board of Forestry meeting?
That, that would be really valuable, absolutely. And this was very high-level introductory material that I, that the three of us brought here today. And certainly, we could return, if you would like, and, and think more, provide a little bit more detail, and ahead of time, get that to you ahead of time. And kind of frame up, here's some, here's some feedback we're looking for.
That would be very useful. Chair Sullivan would, is that something that you would support? Do you think that would be feasible in terms of our schedule, et cetera?
I think we'd have to look at the schedule, but I am always happy to hear more information about such an important issue. And so we can, we can talk to staff about, you know, if we were able to do that. And I also know that on the website, Liz, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's, there's quite a bit more information even on the website, on your website, isn't there? More in-depth information? And my understanding, my understanding, I know I sometimes oversimplify things, but my understanding is that the Endangered Species Act is the law of the land. And that it's, hopefully, will remain the law of the land. And so this, this HCP is a, is a way to try to manage that law in terms of how we manage our state forests, and at the same time, have consistent and reliable harvesting. And the actual numbers of it are still being determined. And so even though there's a lot of chatter out there about this or that, we don't, they don't really know those, those answers yet, and they're continuing to work on that. So as you get more answers, I would certainly be happy to hear more from you. And I, and I appreciate you all coming tonight and, and taking the time to, to help us understand this. Commissioner Quila, we haven't heard from you yet today. Do you have any comments on this? Would you like to share? Yes, no? Oh, he can't, you can't, you can't be heard. Okay. Liz, is your staff open to hearing from the commissioners at any time that, could they call? Or who, who would be the good person to call and ask you about questions? And if Commissioner Quila is able to get on, we're happy to listen to him, so.
While the Commissioner's working on that, I'm going to be your best contact. There are many ODF staff that are much more deeply immersed in this, are going to have some more of the detail. But I can certainly kind of field those questions, and if I have to turn to someone else to, to give the more detailed answer, we can do that. But I think that there's some material we'll be able to put together here by the middle of September. And, and provide that to you. And then if you don't have time on agendas, you can send me questions, and we can answer it in as best as we can. That's about the same time where the material's just going to be out for the public as a whole. So because of the current timelines here, I don't see that we'd be able to get material to the counties sooner than we can, just for the public as a whole. So normally, we try to do that, recognizing the special interest, the special relationship we have with the counties, just not going to be able to pull that off this time.
Commissioner Webb?
Thank you, Liz. The, one of the issues that whenever I'm wading through the depth of this, this paperwork, I, and I, I appreciated in your introduction, talking about, I, whether it was your introduction or Andy's, talking about the, the difference in data, et cetera, from, from us, from Clatsop County to Tillamook County. Because so much of the, of the information that we are, that we are given, often doesn't separate out the Clatsop County data. And either one would like a better sense of the uniqueness of the Clatsop County data. The, do I understand correctly that, that we now have, there is the Clatsop Forest, right? But, I mean, I've never actually, anyway, I, I don't understand, when, I think you made the statement, Liz, that, that, that Clatsop County doesn't own any more forest? Isn't that true? We basically handed it all over to the, to the state, right?
I, I believe, and so someone else may be able to answer the question better. First of all, for us, correct, the counties deeded over lands that had suffered catastrophic burns, and then went tax delinquent. And then they deeded into the Board of Forestry for management in exchange for a share of the revenue. So we distribute revenue to the counties that come from timber sale harvest. And that's what we're talking about tonight. We call those Board of Forestry lands. I believe you have County, Clatsop County forests, but I, I'm not sure on that. Yes, Commissioner?
So Commissioner Webb, I'm, I'm happy to talk to you further about this. I think what is unique about Clatsop County in terms of the other trustland counties is that Clatsop County has a negligible amount of federal forest land.
Right.
And we don't have schools, school, I, I get that mixed up. I know Commissioner Duff can help me on that. Common school lands, we don't have that. So those are two ways that other counties get income. We do not have those. So the majority of our forest land in Clatsop County is private forest land, mostly corporate forest land. And then a percentage of the rest of the forest land that we have is state forest. Is that, is that correct, Liz? And so what, what we're talking about here is overseeing what our county forest land is. But this HCP is in terms of all of the forest land that the state oversees. And that is, there are 15 counties with state forest land. But this HCP is going to be situated west of the Cascades. And one of the, one of the things that is good about Clatsop County is that we have good forest land, and there are established habitat already. And so that, that can work in conjunction with what they're hoping to do with that habitat conservation plan. But because they're working with other federal agencies, and getting signed off, eventually signed off with other federal agencies about species, about this and that, there's kind of a buffer. If there was a problem down the line, like Liz said, then the state can say, well, you, you might want to talk to our federal partner on that, because they're the one who signed off on it. And so it's, it's just a way of, like I said before, and I know we keep saying this, but it's a way to ensure harvest and continue with habitat. But as we know, as I know, I've only been studying this since I got elected, this is an ongoing issue. This discussion has been going on for decades, and it will continue to go on. And we are, at this point in time of this conversation, what I myself, my-
Commissioner Sullivan, you're cutting out.
You have cut out, honey.
I believe we have Commissioner Quila who's called in.
Cool. Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I think it was just the universe's way of telling me that I, what I was going to say wasn't that important anyway. But I did appreciate the presentation very much. I did, I did learn a lot. I think that, you know, I'm understanding the concept more, and I, and I think that this is something that we are going to get. If you asked me in July if I would have supported, I, after seeing that, those original numbers, I wouldn't have. But as I understand, the modeling continues, and there's revisions taking place. So that's, I think that I just will continue to kind of have, take that wait-and-see approach. But I appreciate the hard work that's gone into this. And I do welcome a revisit as we get closer to that October date. That's all I got to say.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Commissioner Nebiker, go ahead. I believe Commissioner Sullivan's trying to call back in. Thank you, Teresa. So the way I see it, sounds like you're looking for a consensus perhaps, or the board just saying, yes, we want to see an HCP? Or you want to see what the board would say as far as what, what it would look like? Whether it even amount over time, or it would go up and down? It seems to me, I don't know why it's so difficult for Oregon to get an HCP. I, Washington's had it for a long time. And I don't know why it's so difficult for us. But it seems to me that if we don't do it, it's, it's going to not go well for our, our income from timber sales. That's my concern. When I look at what happened to the Elliott, I just, I shudder. I, I feel like we have to do something so that we can continue getting revenue. That's my opinion.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. That's certainly how I look at it. And I, I just want to be abundantly transparent here, is that the way I see it is, without an HCP, timber harvest volumes are likely to go down. And it's pretty uncertain what conservation would look like for the species. I, I never want to talk about, those, those go hand in hand when we're managing this type of land base. I think with an HCP, it's quite possible harvest levels will go down as well. The question, the difference is that, that what we would like to achieve is that the harvest levels may go down without an HCP, but that they don't go, that we still are above what that would be with an HCP. In other words, they just don't drop as far as they would without an HCP. So it is quite possible harvest levels could go down. The point being, we want to have control over that, and then we have certainty of that over time. As compared to without an HCP, who knows where the bottom, bottom is? You're spot on around the Elliott. Yeah, that was related to the Murellat lawsuit, and joint motion to dismiss, put together some policies, and harvest basically came to a screeching halt and hasn't returned. As far as Washington goes, they got their OWL HCP in 1997. So very long time ago, and the leadership in Washington at that time just maybe read the writing on the wall. So different, different scenario. But we, we also have tried before with this same land base and worked successful. So one of the things I'm excited about is we have really good momentum right now, and that counts for a lot.
Okay, thank you, Liz. And like I, can everybody hear me? Okay, because I'm on a phone and not on my computer now, kind of, I, but I can see you. So I just, I'm just needing to move this meeting along, and, and I really appreciate ODF coming here. Thank you, Liz. Thank you, Andrew, and, and thank you, Brett, for coming.
Thank you, Andrew, and, and, and thank you Brett for coming. And thank you for all the good questions. Um, you know, Mark, I, I, I mean, Commissioner Quila, did you have any questions I, did you, were you able to get back in?
I got my profundities out there.
Okay, so that was when I was trying to get back on myself. So, all right, very good. Um, all right, well, thank you very much. And we will move on now to, oh, I'm sorry, Brett, did you have a question or a comment? Are you just waving goodbye?
No, just saying thank you to all of you doing, I mean, it's, it's public service commissioner work, so thank you all.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks for coming in. Okay, so let's move on now to, um, to the next part of our agenda, which is, uh, public comments. And, uh, Clerk of the Board, do you, do we have some public comments tonight?
Yes, we have both written and, uh, people on the phone to testify.
Okay, um, I, do, how many do we have?
It looks like, uh, four, four written and two callers. Some of them are, some of them are quite lengthy, so I was going to, they're, they'll all go into the record, but I was going to just, uh, read up to about two minutes worth.
I think that's good. And, and, um, my understanding is, uh, the county manager may need to leave, uh, at, at seven twenty, uh, by seven twenty-five, so, um, I, I, I see him. Is there anything you would like to say in case we cannot get to your report before you leave, County Manager?
No, Commissioners, um, I don't have anything urgent to share. Um, we're seeing a lot of each other this week, and so, um, I will just continue to talk with you, um, as we have these many meetings. So, and I just want to thank you for all your time this week.
Thank, thank you, County Manager. I appreciate that. And, uh, uh, so we will now go back to, uh, Clerk of the Board and we will listen to the, uh, public, uh, public comments, please.
Okay, the first one is from Jay Halliday. My name is Jay Halliday and my wife Renee and I own property at eight one one six four and eight one one seven zero Sunset Vista Road. These two family home sites are in unincorporated Clatsop County between the Arcadia and Hubpoint State Recreation Areas. Last year, our neighborhood worked with this commission and ODF to find alternatives to a proposed timber site and clear cut of the trees on Norristown Heights. This 77 acres is part of a larger parcel managed by ODF and is the sole source of drinking water for ourselves and over 20 other residents along this stretch of Highway 101. Through our joint efforts, the timber sale has been deferred and we are currently working on a long-term forest management plan and ownership plan for this watershed area. I am not an environmentalist, nor am I a member of the timber industry. I'm a retired 30-year Oregon resident that has learned a lot about forest management issues over the past 14 months as we have worked to protect our watershed. What I have learned indicates that we have a long way to go to balance the management of our timber and watershed resources. What I have also learned is that hasty decisions on forest management matters can lead to damage that takes decades, even centuries to repair. Unfortunately, I have not seen a sustained constructive dialogue addressing these and related matters. Hopefully, we can be part of a new, more constructive dialogue. As part of my efforts to protect our watershed, I was provided correspondence dated August 21st, 2020, directed to this board and other parties from Steve Zika, CEO of Hampton Lumber. In my opinion, this correspondence represents some of the challenges to finding good solutions for water and timber resource management. Mr. Zika's letter references many things as fact that are based on work that is not finalized. It also makes a leap to projecting economic impacts that may or may not be realized, especially in today's uncertain environment. ODF's HCP will be an important piece of work in the overall element of forest management, and we need to let the department perform, pre-form their due diligence and outreach before we all jump to unfounded conclusions. In summary, Mr. Zika appears a bit impatient. And the rest of the letter I did forward on to the Commissioners. So I'll go on to the next letter, who's from Kristin Covert. Thank you for accepting my testimony relating to tonight's discussion about the ODF HCP. My husband, Mike Covert, and I are homeowners of eight one oh eight seven Arcadia Road, Cannon Beach, Oregon, which is located off Highway 101 between Arcadia and Hubpoint State Recreation Areas. Our sole water source, as well as that of about 20 other homes on this stretch of the North Coast, comes from a watershed owned by the Oregon Department of Forestry. We have all been granted a water right through the Oregon Water Resources Department to collect water at several points along the stretch of Highway 101. As you are all aware, we have worked with the ODF to defer a 77-acre parcel where our water sources are located from their list to be logged. We are currently working to find a solution to protect this forest indefinitely. I believe it is imperative that the ODF continues to move forward with development of the Habitat Conservation Plan in order to protect not only forests for endangered species, but also to provide an avenue to protect watersheds for Oregonians. With more people moving to rural areas due to COVID-19, there will be more demand, demands on our natural resources. A balance needs to be found between suitable forests for harvest and protecting the special places that make Oregon unique. The proper management of our state forest should involve a well-thought-out plan that involves many different organizations coming to the table to offer their expertise. The work done on the HCP has been a good example of different entities coming together. Decisions that will affect the long-term livability for Oregonians should not be made hastily. Please practice patience and continue to see that the HCP moves forward for all Oregonians. Thank you for accepting my input on this topic. The next letter is from JM Browning Logging, and this one's quite lengthy, so I'll just read, uh, the first part and then the rest was forwarded on to the Commissioners. Oregonians have been harvesting trees in Oregon for 200 years. The tree harvesting has generated trillions of dollars and those monies have built our great state. Oregon is rich in water agriculture and timberlands. We still have 90% of the timber standing since the year 1850. Our first lumber mill was built in 1827 by Hudson's Bay, and much of the lumber manufacturing there was set, sent to the Sandwich Islands, which is now known as Hawaii. 10 years later, Ewing Young built the first mill in what, the Willamette Valley. Most of that mill's products went to China. We have been shipping processed lumber in Oregon by Oregonians all over the world, and our legacy has helped build cities and communities along with our own United States. I don't believe taking timberlands out of production is beneficial to Oregon's wildlife, economy, forest health, and the prevention of wildfires. Other agencies and states have different ways of managing timberlands, but with many negative effects. To humans, wildlife, timberlands, and local economies collapse. And this next letter is from Concerned Friends for Clatsop County. This is on the Public Works Resiliency Project. We are all aware that many of our important buildings are in the inundation zone and need to be moved. What we are not aware of is clear plan for the movement of Public Works facility and the proposed purchase of the Lewis and Clark Main Line. After the August 13th meeting, we came away shaking our heads at the lack of answers from simple questions about the road layout to more pointed questions about how much this will cost the taxpayers. Many of us have been doing research on your properties of the choice for the new Public Works facility from as far back as 2012. And the one property that comes up throughout these documents is the North Coast Business Park. Using the Public Works Department's own presentation from 2019, the advantages should be very convincing. Existing urban areas can be a geographic location already owned by county, zoned one general industrial outside tsunami inundation zone. And an extremely important addition that we brought up on, at the August 13th meeting, being centrally located to help a larger group of citizens as part of a first responder team with ODOT, State Police, Clatsop County Sheriff's Department, Medics, Pacific Power, as well as utilizing the Warrenton School as a triage center. And it came, there's more to the letter, which was forwarded on to the board, and then it came with a serve, uh, a petition that they, uh, signed. And then I also have two, uh, phone calls on the line. Doug Cooper, if you could state your name and address for the record, you'll have two minutes to speak, please.
You bet. Thank you very much. Uh, my name is Doug Cooper. I actually live in Corvallis, Oregon. I'm Vice President of Resources for Hampton Lumber. I'd like to thank, uh, Liz Den and Andy White, uh, for taking the time this evening to share information on the department's, uh, plans developing a new forest management plan and a habitat conservation plan, a draft. Certainly Hampton's been actively engaged with the Department of Forester Staff and the contractor, ICF, to understand the details of the department's draft habitat conservation plan and the outcomes of that plan, both conservation outcomes and, uh, harvest volumes that are projected. And the commission members should have received a letter this week from Steve Zika, CEO of Hampton Lumber, sharing his perspective and concerns of state forest management planning, and specifically the draft Habitat Conservation Plan. I'll highlight a couple of Steve's last points of where we go from here. Hampton will urge the Department of Forestry and the Board of Forestry to reject any plan that does not provide reliable, long-term revenue and economic opportunities appropriate to the capacity of the land. Hampton will also urge the board to reject any plan that does not allow for enough revenue generation to cover the Department of Forestry's costs associated with protecting and managing state forests and all the benefits they provide. Uh, an earlier comment suggested Steve's, uh, and his perspective is maybe a little bit impatient. I'd urge the commission and the public, uh, to do as what was suggested earlier, to look at the, uh, department's website and look at the decades of work that have gone into forest management planning and as, uh, Liz Den commented earlier, previous work to develop a habitat conservation plan that was unsuccessful. I'd also urge the commission to request the Department of Forester Staff to share details of the draft plan and the projected significant reduction in Clatsop County timber harvest and associated reduction in revenue, specifically to the county. Uh, the question was asked, uh, what does, um, the department need from the commission? And I would turn that around and suggest that the commission needs to ask the department for a full accountability of information that they have now, today, regarding the draft plan. A couple of weeks ago, there was a Council of Forest Trust Land Counties webinar that, uh, Mason Bruce and Gerard and other presenters, including our CEO, Steve Zika, presented quite a bit of information that is available now, that, uh, will indicate the significant reductions in harvest and revenue to specific counties, Clatsop and Tillamook.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cooper.
Thank you very much for the time.
All right. Roger Nugubauer?
Thank you. Uh, I'm Roger Nugubauer. Uh, my wife and I, Bonnie, uh, live at eight oh four two four Highway 101 Arch Cape. Um, we are permanent residents of, of Clatsop County, residing less than 100 feet, 100 yards from the proposed Norristown Heights Clear Cut along Highway 101. Through the advocates, advocacy of people living in our neighborhood, we have been able to work convinced ODF to defer the clear cut of the Norristown Heights project, um, so that we can work with them to pursue and also alternative options. And I want to personally thank Liz Den for being extremely helpful in this process. She was really helpful. The letter from Hampton Lumber seeks to terminate this fruitful process based on some highly questionable assertions. Of course, Hampton Lumber is not an objective third party to the process. It is in their best interest and the bottom line of their company that clear cutting continue unabated. I confess, I am not an objective third party either. My wife and I have a huge self-interest in the process as Norristown Heights is where we draw 100% of our water with a permit approved by the state of Oregon. I implore the county commission not to rush to judgment, but to move forward with ODF in an orderly participative process in the development of the Habitat Conference, Cons- Conservation Plan. Thank you.
Thank you. That is all the public testimony, Commissioner Sullivan.
Okay, uh, thank you very much. Um, and I appreciate everyone tonight that came and shared their, their views and sent the email in. That's, uh, very important for public process and I, and I appreciate it. So let's now go on to the consent calendar. Thank you, uh, for our guests, and if you need to get home and get some dinner, you feel free to do that.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Thompson moves adoption of the consent calendar.
Yes, I'm getting to that, Commissioner Thompson. Thank you. Uh, so, uh, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Thompson moves to adopt the consent calendar.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A point of order?
Yes.
I thought that in our work session, did we talk about, um,
We, you know, Commissioner Thompson, we did do that when we approved the agenda. So the, the consent calendar, um, that, it's my understanding, Commissioner Thompson, you can, i- it's section number eight was removed. And so that was done, um, when we first started the meeting. And so when she went to approve the consent calendar, that is with, with the set number eight, um, off the table.
Right.
Okay?
Right, thank you.
Okay, but thank you for that clarification. Did you want to second that?
Sure, I'll second the consent calendar as amended.
Okay, thank you. Um, any, uh, let's, uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Aye. So the consent calendar has been passed unanimously. Uh, let's, let's go on now to, uh, the Commissioner Liaison Report. And, uh, Commissioner, uh, Thompson, would you like to start?
Thank you, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, just, I'm, just a moment, Commissioner Thompson. I see it's very close to the time that our county manager need, needs to leave, so, um, I want to give him, uh, a chance to, to say goodbye and, and to, uh, to leave the meeting so he can take care of business.
Well, I just want to say, um, I, I, I am leaving just so I can deal with some family, um, family conversations. And so, um, I'll be back bright and early tomorrow morning for, for another busy day. So, um, so I will see you all tomorrow. Thank you.
And County Manager, I just want to, uh, let you know, if anything changes, you let us know and we will, uh, we'll work with whatever we need to do. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Still working on broadband, still working on childcare, uh, now working on illegal camping in all kinds of rural areas of District Five and beyond, looking at air quality and, um, the regulation of, um, air quality in Clatsop County. It's a longer term issue, but I've been working with DEQ air quality and, um, the state fire marshal and Cannon Beach Fire Chief, and through him, the Fire Defense Board and, uh, and county code compliance in state parks for the wildfires on the beach, because there's a lot of people here and they're creating, um, they're creating a lot of circumstances that I think we hadn't anticipated. And having compassion for everyone who's impacted by COVID-19, we still need to protect our, uh, neighborhood livability. So that's my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Quila, would you like to go next?
Yeah, I'll just reiterate, uh, my appreciation for all that participated in the 4H Livestock Auction, the virtual 4H Livestock Auction out at the Fairgrounds. Um, and it was success and it was, uh, great to see those kids, uh, be able to, uh, to, uh, follow through on, on all their hard work. Um, I also want to, uh, recognize Kevin Leahy and, and Cedar and SBDC and all that they've done over the COVID crisis. Uh, they've been a real, uh, life vest and life, I guess, life preserver for a lot of small businesses in this community. Um, there's still a lot of work to be done with it. If you're in the restaurant industry and, and, uh, and hotel industry, um, this is a brutal, brutal time for you, but, um, I, I do appreciate those that have been really, uh, doing a lot of heavy lifting to help out businesses in, in, in this tough time. So again, time. So again, Kevin Leahy and Cedar have done tremendous work. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Quila. Commissioner Nebiker?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Nebiker. Commissioner Webb?
Yes, I would just like to, consistent actually with, with Commissioner Quila's comments, Cedar has, has just been, to me, unbelievably quick in putting together seminars, in dealing with, I wish I could remember, I was in a meeting with Kevin just a week or so ago, and he was talking about the numbers of people who they have consulted with. And it's just, it's, it's been terrific. I just can't, can't give them enough credit for that. The other thing I'd like to, to say is that even though I am not traveling to cities in the county other than Astoria, I have been really impressed at the extent to which a lot of our local merchants in Astoria are, are complying with all of the COVID requirements, working so hard, open more hours than they ever have been before, practicing all of the COVID requirements with, with great ardor, and also with great humor sometimes. I'm just, I'm so very, very impressed with that. And I think that, that, I wish there was something we could do for them, other than hook them up with other resources. But, but it's been very, very satisfying, especially among the deluge of tourists who are often not wearing masks and not being terribly nice when they are reminded that they supposed to. And it's, and our merchants have just been fantastic. They have, they've tackled this issue with great aplomb, and I'm very proud to represent most of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Webb. I guess, I, I too have been very, been very impressed with how this community has come together to, to manage COVID. Kevin Leahy and his team deserve a lot of credit, and as do so many businesses and government staff and whatnot. It's been a tough time, but I, I'm really not surprised that Clatsop County has pulled together to, to help each other. And I think that's, I think that's really wonderful. I'm still, it's just difficult to, some of the national news that we talked about earlier, I, I really hope that the difficult times that we are in is moving towards resolution, and, and we will be heading into a better tomorrow if we can get some of these problems solved. Because, I mean, Black Lives Matter, and I, I, it's just heartbreaking what's, what's happening. But anyways, let's go on. The county manager has, has left, and is there any other comments or any good of the order? And I, and I, okay, so that's, that's it. And so tomorrow, on, on the schedule, if it changes, we'll let you know that we will be meeting again for an executive session. And I hope you all have a good evening tonight. And Commissioner Nebiker, keep your ear to the ground, so if you have any more basketball news, we'll, we'll be looking forward to that. And I'm, I'm still hoping that maybe the Blazers can pull something out, but we don't, we don't know yet. So, all right. Take care of, I'm sorry.
Oh, well, my, my concern is that my grandson might lose his job if the whole thing is boycotted. That's a very selfish concern, but that's what I'm wondering about. But of course, I understand that they feel the, some of those players feel that, that they don't have any business playing basketball and creating a diversion when the nation should be focused on what's been going on. They want to be with their communities. I understand that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And so does he.
Okay, well, thank, yeah. Thank you, everyone, and thanks for the evening. And thank you, Joanna, for hanging in there. I was gonna say, did you want to give a report since the county manager is out of?
Heck, no.
Okay, we'll see you all tomorrow. And thank you, Teresa. Thanks for all your good work. All right.
All right, bye-bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.